Say it's six o'clock. The time on the wall says six o'clock, so I'll call the October 25th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. Would you please call the roll, Viddy? Tom Dawson?
President.
Cheryl Lee?
Present.
Pablo Serna?
Pablo's here, but I believe he stepped out for a second.
Okay. Excellent. He's present. He's present, yes. Excellent. Patrick Connell?
Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Moore?
Here.
Matt Lassen?
Yep.
Greg Sherry?
Here.
Richard Gartman?
President.
Cynthia Meyer?
Here.
And here comes Pablo.
And I will say, for Chris, we are, these meetings are streamed live and videoed, so please use your microphones. You do have to share, because I think we only have seven up there.
Since we have three new members, I think it would behoove us if we all went down the row and introduced ourselves and maybe gave a little background and why you're interested in planning and zoning. Tom, we'll start with you.
Hello, my name is Tom Dawson. I'm a resident of Bastrop, I live in Hunter's Crossing, been there almost four years. Actually got interested in planning and zoning a couple of years ago from some developments that were going in close to our homes and attended meeting and kind of caught the fever. So when this position was open, I thought about it long and heavy and decided that I really wanted to be a part of this, and I'm really excited to be here.
Welcome. Cheryl?
My name is Cheryl, Cheryl Lee. I am fourth generation, I think, of Bastrop, so I grew up here, have lived here the majority of my life, and just wanted to be more active in the community. I do a lot of work in Austin Legislative, on different legislative committees, organizing, lobbying, but I live here, so my friends started talking bad about me because I don't do a lot here. So that was kind of my motivation, and as I've matured, I wanted to be part of the community, so I joined this committee.
My name is Pablo Serna, I'm an architect. Moved to Bastrop, the city about in December 2017. We've been looking at Bastrop ever since I was a little kid. I came up to camp at the state park, but my wife and I really got interested in living here, and we sold a really nice three-acre lot in, out in the country, and bought a house about three blocks from here, so. Very interested, I believe Bastrop has a lot of potential, I think some of the best potential around the area, just given the natural resources, the character of the housing, the downtown, a lot of things, I think it needs a few things, though. I think a public square would be number one it needs, and I think parking's going to be something that we've got to tackle, but I'm excited, hopefully I can serve.
Thank you.
My turn.
Your turn.
My turn.
You're a shy person.
Patrick Connell, I've been in the county for almost 10 years, in the city for about three and a half. Kind of a, I'm a real estate broker, so I feel like I have kind of a feel for kind of what's coming in and kind of what's happening in the area. I would agree that Bastrop has a lot of potential and the ability to kind of take control of where we're going, which is what we've been doing, so it's great. I've been serving on the commission for a little over two years, I think. I've lost track, anyway. So, that's me.
Time flies when you're having fun. My name's Debbie Moore, and I have been honored to serve as Planning and Zoning Chair. I'm a South Louisiana transplant, but I've been here since late 2004. Fell in love with the town and got involved in a lot of different things, and I agree that this is where it's going to be happening, and I wanted to have a hand in trying to make sure it grew the way we wanted it to grow. So, this is the place to be. Thank you.
My name is Matt Lassen, and I live downtown, close to Debbie. I kind of want to be involved, just because I want to see how Bastrop develops and have a say in it. Had the opportunity to develop and build this building next door to us that we can't see, because the windows are closed, or the blinds are, but it was a fun process. I really liked it, and plenty of pitfalls along the way, and a lot of joys involved in it, and wanted to be involved in trying to make that a more streamlined process.
I'm Greg Sherry, recently retired from 40 years at a chemical plant on the coast, and we came up here a couple of years ago looking for a place to retire, and we fell in love with this place here, and they had a volunteer convention there, and I went to that. Planning and zoning seemed like a pretty good, pretty good thing. I just wanted to contribute to my new society, do a little more than just pay taxes, so I'm kind of on a learning curve here, so glad we got to season vets.
You're welcome.
Richard Gartman, I've only been here since October 2016, and like Tom, I live in Hunter's Crossing, and the buildings behind us is what got me interested, and it's just like it got Tom into it. So, as has been mentioned, we're going to have a lot of changes. We're going to be growing, and the question is, how do we manage it so it works for us?
And my name is Cynthia Meyer, and I am a lifelong resident of Bastrop. I've owned a business right now and property on Main Street, and I was trying to think, it's been about 40 years that I've been on Main Street. I live in the city of Bastrop, I grew up on Con Street, and I've always loved this town. And as fast as we're growing, I know that everyone wants to maintain the integrity and the flavor and the distinctiveness of Bastrop, so that was my interest in being on Planning and Zoning, so we can plan it the smart and right way for growth to happen.
Thank you, everyone, and you can see we have a quite diverse membership on this commission, from lifelong residents to newbies, and I think that's going to be one of our strengths, in helping us look at things from lots of different angles and come up with some things that are good for Bastrop. But thank you all. That called order, and item two is citizen comments. Three minute, at this time, three-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. To address the board, please submit a fully completed request card to the board chairperson prior to the beginning of the meeting. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, if a citizen discusses any item not on the agenda, city boards cannot discuss issues raised or make any decision at this time. Instead, city boards are limited to making a statement of specific information or a recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry. Issues may be referred to city staff for research and possible future action. It's not the intention of the city of Bastrop to provide a public forum for the embarrassment or demeaning of any individual or group. Neither is it the intention of the board to allow a member of the public to slur the performance, honesty, and/or integrity of the board as a body or any member or members of the board individually or collectively, nor any members of the city's staff. Accordingly, profane, insulting, or threatening language directed toward the board and/or any person in the board's presence will not be tolerated. Do we have anyone who wishes to make a public statement? Citizen comments?
Not at this time.
Seeing none, we will move on to item three, items for individual consideration. Three A is Consider Action to Approve Meeting Minutes from the September 27, 2018 Planning and Zoning Commission.
I wasn't here, but I have a correction. I wasn't here, so I definitely did not call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM.
I will correct them on the minutes.
Got you.
And we had one of our new members who was here, and I don't think it's, Greg, you're?
I will add that to the minutes.
Okay. Are there any other additions, corrections, amendments, deletions? Hearing none, I will accept a motion at this time to approve the minutes as corrected. I make a motion to approve minutes as corrected. Motion by Cynthia? Second by Richard. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining. I wasn't here.
Okay. Thank you. Three B, Public Hearing and Consider Action to Approve An Ordinance for A Conditional Use Permit to Allow Manufactured House on .572 Acres of Farm Lot 65, east of Main Street, located at 1603 Highway 95, an area zoned AOS, agricultural open space, within the city limits of Bastrop. Ms. Bill?
Good evening. So this request is for a conditional use permit for a manufactured home to be placed on this lot. As you can see in the aerial, this property is located at 1603 State Highway 95. The, there was, up until the spring, a house that was on this property. The house that was there was flooded in the 2015 floods, and then became unlivable, so the property owner, after time, just had to demolish the house, and now they're looking to come back and put a manufactured home on this site. This already came before the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier for subdivision variance for septic at this location, as the site has been served by septic in the past, and they wish to continue using that method of sewer. The zoning for this area, for this lot and the surrounding area, is agricultural open space. It's directly across from our Form Based Code area. This is the Lib Works zoning district, and you have the commercial mixed use to the south, and this over here is the cemetery. The future land use for this area is transitional residential, which allows for some higher-density single-family and multifamily uses. The site is already zoned agricultural open space, which does allow for a manufactured home. The applicant is requesting a proposed structure that will be made out of hardy board, wood siding with cedar trim, and then a limestone finish, and the street-facing facade will look like this. This is the actual, we'll leave the actual unit. So it'll have a front porch, stairs, and that'll be what you see from the street view. Section 33.2 of the zoning ordinance has the conditional use criteria, and there are five main clauses. The first, that the use is harmonious and compatible with existing or proposed land uses. The existing land use in the vicinity is undeveloped land. The future land use plan does designate this as residential area, so this is compatible with those uses. The activities requested by the applicant are associated with the base zoning district, and single-family is a use within the agricultural open space district. The CUP is required mainly for the structure type. The nature of the use is reasonable. The requested use will continue the previous single-family use that was on the site. Any negative impact on the surrounding area has been mitigated. For a manufactured home, there's a list of criteria that I'll go over in a second, but the main issues that are that off-street parking be provided for, which they're showing a carport, and that the proposed structure be oriented to face the street. And then the other, any other additional conditions. If you look in your packet, they had a conceptual site plan that didn't match the property boundaries, so for the actual building permit, they'll need to provide a, an actual survey showing the location of the unit with the onsite septic.
You said, I think, previously that it was zoned to allow manufactured housing?
It allowed, so all of our residential zoning districts allow manufactured housing with a conditional use permit.
With a CUP, okay.
Which is by statute, correct?
That's by our zoning code, yeah.
Okay.
And that goes into, that there is actually a specific section of the code, Section 35.4, that has special and supplemental requirements, in this case specifically for a manufactured home, and it's meant to mitigate any issues that have been seen in the past. And I will caveat that a lot of these conditions have been in the code since the 80s, and manufactured housing in the style, and look and feel of it has changed over that timeframe, so. There are 12 different clauses, and there are two in specific. They meet 10 of them, two of them, they meet the intent, but they don't meet the strict application. So the first is Clause F, the manufactured home must be sighted with the longest dimension parallel to the street. And this comes about because traditionally, when you looked at manufactured housing in the 80s and 90s, you typically had the front door on the long side of the building, and that was to ensure that you had the front door actually facing the street and not one of the ends. And the second being that the manufactured home is at least 20 feet, 28 feet wide. And that also comes about because typically manufactured homes came kind of in two sizes, 14 feet and 28 feet wide, and then they could come up as long as 72 to 90 feet long. So you ended up with a really skinny, long building in some areas of the world. So this was to make sure you had a structure that was in better proportions to our other single-family scale, and in this case, the proposed structure is 24 feet by 44 feet in size, which is keeping in kind with the traditional footprint of a single-family home in this area. So you'll see a lot of homes in that proportionality. With, this is in compliance with our moratorium, as it's considered grandfathered under the local government code, Chapter 245 rules, that because they were already in process, they'd already declared the intent to do this through their other applications. Staff's recommendation is to hold a public hearing tonight, and then consider action to recommend approval to the city council. And then the next steps would be that the recommendation from P and Z goes to the city council on November 13th for a public hearing and first ordinance reading. Any questions? And the applicant is here, as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I'd just remind that our previous meeting, we had decided as a group that Ms. Peterson should be punished, because we had a flooding issue that damaged her house when we have an existing flooding issue inside the city, and so just remind everybody that we had discussed that and came to an agreement with it previously, so.
And what do you mean by that?
I'm just putting it out there, because we're not quite to the point where I can make a motion yet, so I'm just putting it out there.
Are there any more comments?
Have a question. On the roof type, this is one of the lower pitch roofs, and I know they do that, so they can get them under, you know, on their transport. I know that that particular manufacturer makes roofs that they can put a steeper pitch roof on there. Is that, would that be cost prohibitive to find out about?
She's already actually closed on this.
Could you come to the, did you fill out a form?
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Okay. But you speaking, please identify yourself.
My name is Val Kugel, and I'm the salesperson. I've been helping Lassie Peterson through this process.
Okay.
I work with Clayton Homes. You're correct that that manufacturer does offer a higher roof pitch. This is a four, a three or four 12 roof pitch. They can do a 612, that's a special order, and this house in particular that's on my lot is the one that she's purchased already.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Is it just for aesthetics, or?
Well, I think that that's probably primarily the issue, a lower pitch roof, that kind of width, kind of, you know, we can get a little steeper pitch, but that's just, I think the other question I had was the location of the carport. Is it a carport?
Yes, that's planned, yes.
Is it possible to put that in the rear of the lot?
Sure, I'm sure we can relocate the carport, yeah. I just was trying to accommodate the covered parking need for that. I also wanted to say that the foundation, because I like, she commented on the standards are from the 80s, and there's been a lot of changes, manufactured housing, since 99 was sort of the threshold for when they started putting in new standards. So the foundation and the way it's set on the property is going to meet FHA standards as well, which is, it's much easier to refinance or purchase a manufactured home that's already in existence if we're also meeting FHA standards, rather than just bare minimum for, you know, setting it on pat site. We're going to do a concrete foundation for her, so.
Those are the comments.
The only thing I would have from the previous thing is, where is Ms. Peterson at in her budget with the current site plan setup? I'm wondering, I agree with moving the parking toward closer to the rear. I'm just wondering if that's going to present a budget issue for her.
I don't believe so. I think mostly we're just material cost on that. We may go a little higher, because we're probably going to have to meet a roof, you know, try to match the roof pitch if we're going to the rear of the house, but I've got a good contractor that's on my side as far as helping her out and getting her what she needs, so.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you.
I have a motion to approve, as is with the city staff recommendations, and I'll also add the condition of moving the parking to the rear of the building.
Is motion on the floor, is there a second? Second. Any further comments?
I guess I would like more clarification on why we want to move the carport to the rear, because in remembering Ms. Peterson, when she was here before, she was up in age, and I'm just thinking that might not be the best option for her, so why are we even entertaining that?
I would say, well, I don't disagree with you, I don't know if that would be necessarily a factor when determining how the future of that section of the highway is going to look. So I don't necessarily disagree with you, but there's also, the cars, the parking's going to have to be behind the front facade of the house, anyway, so I think we're talking maybe 15, 20 feet of extra space, so.
Where are you basing your future idea of what that, where are you basing that on?
Could we amend the motion? Because I think it's, it could be burdensome to her to make these changes, and she's already been through so much, that I would like for this to be met as smoothly as possible, and...
I agree.
I was just going to point out that the side the carport is on also has another door that, I don't want to scroll through her computer, but there's an exit door that's going to go out to that carport, so it would be ultimately the most, you know, plausible thing to have it on that side, if that's possible. Just want to let that be known.
That's kind of why I posed that question. I kind of thought that, and I just don't, I don't understand the significance of making it be behind.
I can address that. Having a rear parking or rear space to park does a couple of things. One, it gets the cars off of the front on the facade. I don't know what the minimum parking on this is, two spaces or not. I mean, I don't know how far back we can move it, but I'm sure we can probably get it.
Another thing I will state is, since this is agricultural open space, the front setback is pretty extreme in the world of single-family. I think it's, I believe it's a 50-foot setback, so this is, the house and parking will already be set fairly far back from the street.
Not 25 feet, then?
Mm-mm.
I was looking at the site plan, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, that's that plan, but the setbacks that apply there are actually 50 feet, so...
And looking at this site plan, it looks like the parking would be right up against the edge of the property, but that's...
No, it will not. That's why I was saying that they need an accurate survey when the building plans come in, because to show where that's going to be, because the lot is actually, oops, see if, is shaped. One of the utility maps has it in that rectangular formation, I think that's where they got that. Some of the maps are off, but it's actually this kind of interesting trapezoid shape. So they actually will be kind of back, kind of where that angle is, they'll have to be set back. So they'll be set back from the road pretty considerably. You could say maybe stagger the, the Form Based Code does require you to have, because right now they're showing the carport being flush with the front, you could have them set it back a little further on the side, if you're worried about that, but it will be, there'll be a considerable distance from the property line.
So I appreciate Cheryl's question, because it brought this to light. If we're not doing 25-foot setbacks like a normal, as a single-family home, I will amend my motion, and I will make a motion to approve, as is with staff recommendations.
I will second that. Been a motion and a second, is there any further comment? Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Tom Dawson?
Yes.
Cheryl Lee?
Yes.
Pablo Serna?
No.
Patrick Connell?
Did you, try again.
No.
Opposed? Yes.
Yeah. Yes, for me.
Okay. Debbie Moore?
Yes.
Matt Lassen?
Yes.
Greg Sherry?
Yes.
Richard Gartman?
Yes.
Cynthia Meyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 3C, Presentation Update on the Downtown DNA Analysis and Code Assessment. Matt, you're on.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Matt Lewis with Simple City Design, and tonight we'll be furthering the journey of building Bastrop. Simple City Design has done a thorough code analysis of all your development regulations. We've also done a analysis of the downtown DNA, as we call it. We've been studying the numerical values that which make up the downtown character, the blocks, the lots, how the buildings relate to the streets, the individual components of the buildings, and how they actually create a walkable type of environment, which we all just experienced on our walking tour today. We did submit a formal DNA report to the city staff, and hopefully the commission did receive that report, as well as the code analysis report. And so what we'll do tonight is we'll go through the code analysis, I'm sorry, the code assessment report with the commission and the community. A hundred years after we're gone, forgotten, those who have never heard of us will be living with the results of our actions. Let that thing, you know, sink in. We're talking about building community here, and building Bastrop, and each decision that you all make is a representation of, an addition of Bastrop, and we believe that building timeless places is what Bastrop has done, particularly with the authenticity that's downtown. The buildings have been down there for 186-plus years, and they've worked for people that live in Bastrop that entire time, and they still work for us today. They've been, they've lived through the test of time, market trends have shifted, the use of transportation has shifted, our entire human patterns and how we move and function and have access to resources has changed, and downtown Bastrop is making it in the age of Amazon, you know, being a small Main Street, and that's impressive. And it's the characteristics and the experience that it provides which make it timeless. And this map here illustrates the city of Bastrop's city limits in proportion to the city of Bastrop's extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ, as it's commonly referred to. And I'll try and really keep this, I know you have some new commissioners and people at home listening to this, we're going to try and keep this as non-technical as possible, but to put this into perspective, where your jurisdictional city limits lie, you have zoning authority and subdivision authority, sign authority, environmental regulations, and so you have the full authority to manage your overall city limits and how it builds out. In the extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ, you have regulations for environmental regulations, and sign regulations, and subdivision regulations, and that's the limit of control. There is no zoning or land use outside of the city limits in the state of Texas. The state of Texas does not allow land use authority outside of its city limits. Just to introduce these concepts, because what we'll be talking about tonight is zoning, and zoning is a land use enactment, and so zoning will govern the uses, the built forms and functions of the individual parcels which make up the land use configurations. Zoning started off in America as an exclusionary tool. It was first used in San Francisco in 1885 as Chinese migrants were moving into San Francisco. There were some areas of town that where they didn't necessarily want that population, and they outlawed Chinese laundromats. First use of zoning, they made Chinese laundromats illegal in San Francisco, and it was the use of a zoning tool. Modern-day zoning codes have been rewritten, and generally the codes that you have on the books were done in the 1950s, 1960s, and modified incrementally over that time period. The information we'll be sharing tonight, Bastrop is not unique with regards to its zoning ordinance. It's very conventional in manners. It looks very similar to Hudders, or to Georgetown's, or Round Rocks, or Flugerville, or, you know, Buuda, Kyle, really similar characteristics, because generally what happens with zoning codes is a city writes one, the next city adopts it, tweaks some localized standards, and you start getting the generic standards that you all have today. Oftentimes, zoning codes are auto-dominant. The time period which we grew up in the United States, the car became the prevalent way of moving, we had an abundance of land which was cheap, and we started to grow outward. It was a relief from the urban city, and people wanted to have their own little cabin in the woods. The vehicle made it a viable option, and we continued to grow outward, and in a very low, dense pattern of development, and that's generally how cities are today still functioning and building. The design regulations in the modern zoning codes generally are an afterthought. It creates placeless places with very large setbacks, large-scale intersections, because it's designed to handle one mode of transportation, which is the car. There is a separation of uses which is required by modern zoning ordinances, which yours has as well. Limited housing choices, the infrastructure which supports these patterns becomes extremely expensive, which is, becomes a burden on tax dollars. It also is integrated into a series of loops and dead-end streets and sprawled pretty far out, which makes it extremely low value for the amount of infrastructure installing at the time that that takes place. And it's also plagued with arbitrary regulations, which we'll get into in just a bit here. The other factor is the general characteristics of the development outcomes oftentimes look like this, where you have... like this, where you have disconnected places that have close proximity to services, but the environment is so uncomfortable and the scale is so large that it's easier to hop in your car and drive than to walk across the street, you know, or safer, if you will. And the orientation of land uses are generally fronted with large parking areas and the buildings move back and so the scale of the intersection is very long and wide and so this is a forty-five-second crossing time, right? And so you have to either sprint it because the signals only give you thirty seconds or you won't make it. When you're walking down the street, oftentimes you experience places like this. We call them inactive street edges. They're not very comfortable and, you know, it's oftentimes a type of environment that you walk as fast as you possibly can to get through because you don't want to be hanging out there. It's not a place you linger, it's not very welcoming and after those non-welcoming places happen, then the development outcomes look like this. This is on the corner of one eighty-three and nine six-nine and you think, oftentimes you hear that developers need high traffic counts and access to make developments work. Well, there's not an intersection in Austin that probably has as high of traffic volume as this and yet there's still failure because the overall design characteristics and the orientation of the development failed to achieve its long-term life cycle, like downtown. If a building downtown, a tenant doesn't make it or market changes, instantly another tenant can come back in without having to change the shape or functions of the building. They remain in the exact same configuration the day that they were built and, you know, those were horse and buggy times, right? And yet they still function for us today and the evolution of the district is very flexible and adaptable, which makes it extremely timeless. Development codes are more than technical standards. They are determining the future of our cities and right now the city of Bastrop receives developments by minimum standards. And so your minimum standards are your subdivision regulations and your zoning regulations. And if someone submits a subdivision plat that meets your minimum standards, which could be a D minus, it means they're approved. And by statutory law, if they meet the minimum requirements, you're required to approve the plat, which I'm sure you're familiar with. And what we're challenging you all to think about is what does the long-term build-out of community, you know, of Bastrop look like for this community? How does it function? How do we move? What does it feel like? And are we willing to accept the bare minimums as a D minus as an acceptable build-out for the future of the city? Zoning of the future, we argue that it should be generational and support a variety of uses and begin to start reconnecting people back to services, reinvesting on existing infrastructure which has already been paid for and bought by the citizens, but may be undervalued or not utilized to its fullest capacity. How might we start integrating and reinvesting in the existing infrastructure and how they're used? Also reintroducing place-type zoning. This is a image of Chestnut Street, which we all just walked down and experienced the quality of this place. These places were built incrementally. As wealth added, as population grew, you incrementally built up and out and you started to incrementally fix these blocks. And so in your downtown, you have three hundred and thirty-foot block segments and those blocks are extremely walkable, they're flexible, adaptable, they have small intersections, the street sections match the built environment. So the ratio of street to width, to building width is almost a one-to-one or one-to-two ratio, which makes it extremely comfortable. There's a well-defined street edge with glass at the ground level. In place-type zoning, you start to reintroduce those types of things. The buildings and street types realign. It encourages creative businesses and uses of space. Places are comfortable and provide for options, options to walk, options to shop, options to not purchase, but still be in a lovely environment, right? And options to linger without having to buy, options to ride your bicycle, to walk. And so providing options is really key. Housing options, different options for retailers or service providers, if you will. The other option is allowing for cost-effective incremental changes to take place where you're not requiring full, meeting the full intent of the code, but to allow incremental changes to take place without overburdening some of the development community or existing buildings that are on the ground, but allowing them to transform incrementally without requiring full compliance. Reconnecting residents to services through infill development and ultimately creating places worth caring about. The zoning code in the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive master plan is your visioning document which guides you until 2036 under the current adopted plan and it identifies very strategic and intentional goals in the comprehensive master plan, which we believe removing some of the historical options that are, I'm sorry, the historical obstacles that are embedded in your development codes may be really beneficial as you go forward through this process. There are nine key elements of the comprehensive master plan which outline the visionary framework to implementation. So the planning and context vision was first, growth and annexation and infrastructure comes next, which is extremely important. And I want you to relate back to your ETJ or your extraterritorial jurisdiction map when you start thinking about growth and annexation and how can that occur in an orderly pattern of development to maximize your infrastructure, your long-term land use patterns, your transportation infrastructure. All of these key components make up the physical environment that we're talking about and how do we design those to be timeless and functional, adaptable and flexible. Public facilities, all key elements when analyzing both annexation as well as building out your city, whether it's libraries, police, fire services, water, wastewater services. All of these components are critical features which cities provide within the public facility services. And then housing and neighborhoods. This is the critical piece, it's the community aspects and where they fit into the overall plan. Land use and urban design, your urban design is the elements which make up the street segments and how the buildings and the streets interrelate and intermix. Transportation, which, you know, is generally means the word car, we're hopeful that it means more than car and it's moving people from use to use and place to place and providing options. Parks and recreation, the ability to have relief from the urban environment and to recreate. Places to gather, linger and play, it's critical that they get reintroduced and recoded back into our communities, which adds to cultural arts and tourism and ultimately leading to the implementation of the comprehensive master plan. So that's the nine pillars which you all have in your plan today. Now I'm going to go ahead and get into the specific findings of the code analysis. As I stated when I, when I first introduced the concept of this, Bastrop is not unique in this, in these terms sound rather harsh, but we're trying to be very transparent that the general standards that you have are pretty generic and ineffective, particularly when it comes to your zoning districts. The code conflicts often with your comprehensive master plan not allowing for the, several of the plan elements to get integrated. The code creates places for cars and not people. Oftentimes the first thing you do is you measure the parking standards and that will, and you design your parking lots and whatever's left over is where you place your building. Really and truly, that's kind of how it's going. Lack of housing choice, it's difficult to use and administer for the city staff and for the users here. It has poor design standards and the sign code is extremely complex and not context-sensitive, which, now we'll get into the specifics of each of these. The generic and ineffective zoning districts generally create one-size-fits-all standards. They're very generic dimensional standards as well as minimum requirements for the way that things lay out on the individual lots. Traditional neighborhood development patterns, which is the pattern of development that you have downtown, has been coded out, made illegal throughout your entire community. Other than the downtown form-based code area, the zoning districts kind of create anywhere America because the general standards are very general and they're similar to all of the cities around this area and Bastrop deserves better than that. Innovation is not allowed by the generic, stringent zoning standards and I say stringent because oftentimes the development community may not be wanting to build what they're building. It may not be that the city staff wanted it or the council or the commission wanted it, but rather that your code standards required it and they're generic and stringent at the same time because they don't allow for moveability of your individual buildings on the lot. And so it's very difficult to code all these characteristics which may be on the lot, where trees grow or where you have site triangles or, you know, those types of things. And so how might you actually allow for more flexibility where the buildings can move to preserve trees, to integrate fence rows or those types of things, characteristics which will create better overall development patterns and long-term developments for the community. Single districts create subdivisions and strip centers rather than neighborhood with retail. The separation of use requirements create physical separations of your retail services or your service characteristic centers from your neighborhoods, rather than allowing for the integration of small-scale house form, commercial or house form services as you do in your downtown area. So how might we start to reintegrate those types of options and opportunities into the plan? The comp plan calls for a diverse housing mix and neighborhood-centric places. The codes design disconnected places through the generic standards and have buffering, screening requirements from each of the individual uses. And so the comp plan also calls for the preservation of history, this is one of the main statements in the comp plan, the preservation of history and character while embracing progress. The code is not aligned with this statement and does not allow for the creation of places representative of the city's history. As I stated earlier, you've made that history completely illegal and again, this is not unique to Bastrop. It happens oftentimes where we adopt general standards for zoning codes because they're, you know, another city up the road adopted them and we don't fully understand how these technical documents are actually creating the outputs that we're receiving and it's really critical that we do understand that. Again, the other nuance or subsection there is that your form-based code does allow for these places. And the plan calls for a series of transportation options. The code does not create places which support transportation options due to large-scale infrastructure requirements, the location of parkings and the required of the separation of uses. The places for cars versus people, the parking dominates and drives the design, which is some of the characteristics you see there. The high parking standards and requirements make it difficult for compatible, small-scale infill, separation of uses, ensure people drive from use to use. The buffer requirements guarantee that everything is disconnected and walled off through the separation requirements. And the minimum lot standards create long distances between residential and other uses. So you'll notice that there are, you know, ten to fifteen-foot setbacks between each of the side yards because of your lot standards. Your lot, minimum lot size is seven thousand square feet. Well, we just walked downtown and saw a lot size that's one thousand square feet where the building makes up one thousand square feet of the one thousand square feet, hundred percent impervious cover, hundred percent building coverage, totally illegal under all of your code standards. But where might you and how might you start to integrate those allowances back in here and maybe have a variety of lot sizes and standards that would create that? So there's the seven thousand square foot minimum requirement. Your multifamily standards only really allow for two types of garden apartments and two different density styles. And so the image here is a duplex built in Austin, which wouldn't meet your minimum standards. The multifamily zoning districts don't allow for, they do allow for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, sixplex, eightplex, tiny homes, but when you actually start running the standards, you can't build them. The math doesn't work out. So it's a full math equation to start, to analyze that based on your lot configurations and your minimum standards. So it basically codes them out without coding them out. Mobile home is only allowed for the HUD manufactured homes, which we just heard today because it was done in the eighties and they coded that one product. And so, you know, we're saying that how might you actually allow for tiny homes or small homes to be reintegrated in, which are already in Bastrop. And the downtown DNA assessment, which we provided a public introduction to, we show a series of small houses that were brought in from Camp Swift and integrated into a site. And so we say Bastrop had tiny houses before it was cool, but you made them kind of illegal again and so maybe we should reevaluate that, those types of standards. And the site and facade elevations required at the time of zoning, this is for multifamily housing. The standards don't necessarily ensure that you're getting the design that you want, but you're creating a upfront cost for the multifamily when, with those requirements. You have usable open space requirements that don't necessarily create usable open space. You can get these remainder tracks that would actually become maintenance issues for the city staff rather than usable open space for the community, which you're supposed to be receiving the usable open space. The spatial dimensions create long, sorry, large, low-density products on large parcels of lands. So when you start running your calculations for your units per acre, you have twenty-four units an acre, but you buy a much larger tract of land so that your net density would hit the twenty-four units an acre and you can meet all your usable open space requirements and the other spatial dimensions required by the zoning code. Buffers between single-family and commercial and industrial create places that are not integrated into the community and form separations both between citizens in multifamily and single-family housing, as well as the other commercial types of uses, which could be amenities, but instead they become disconnected places. The codes are difficult to use and administer. It's a very text-based document and there's conflicts throughout many of the codes. The codes, standards and requirements are not easy to locate or administer. In fact, one of the conversations we had with the city staff on one of their interpretations, we could not find, we were like, where are they coming up with this? And so we finally put a phone call into Jennifer and we were like, we cannot understand where you're coming up with this. And she said, oh, it's in the definitions section. You're administering the code from definitions? Yes, you are. Your definitions actually have some of your code standards in there and if you don't read the definitions, you would never know that it's actually a code requirement. So it's extremely difficult to use and generally you would want to go to one section and find your standards to do development and that's not necessarily the case. The terminology and multiple definitions create conflicts and make the code hard to interpret. The document is primarily text-based and has a few tables which I found out that are not, are actually supposed to be in there and they're not very effective. And so the use tables also are overly complicated and define use standards which should be consolidated. You get down into like a bank versus a loan place or, you know, a, there's a variety of uses that can be completely consolidated that you wouldn't necessarily know, but generally the use standards are parking dimensions and those are the kind of things that would change, but not really have an overall impact in the built environment. The parking requirements list is long and complicated and doesn't align with the use tables. So you've got to run this numbers multiple times to make the numbers work up. There's, the layers of requirements don't often match. The shared parking section, which we talked about in the field, is extremely difficult and sometimes impossible to achieve. We recommend really revisiting that section as well. And here's kind of an example of what a text code looks like versus a graphic code. In the graphic code, all of your numerical standards are laid out here, your front setbacks and there are your side setbacks, where the courtyards would go, where your parking goes in the blue, where your public right-of-way or side yards would be. And they're all depicted into a graphic chart and, you know, versus reading through something like this and trying to come up with the standards and how it would integrate in.
That one on the right is essentially what our form-based code looks like, right?
Yes, sir.
When we read the document?
It does. And so we would like to have the entire code function in this configuration where it's much easier to use and a general person that may want to build a new deck can come in and pick up the code and it's user-friendly enough that they can understand it and not have to hire consultants to build a deck, right? And that's, that's kind of where we'd like to get to. The design and construction standards, commercial buildings have material requirements. There are no orientation standards of how the buildings front or relate to the street. There's no entrance standards, transparency or articulation requirements for the buildings. Row houses are outlawed under the code. The material list conflicts between each of the sections. All the commercial buildings must be fenced or walled off from the other uses. And with good design standards, these could be dramatically improved and helped with the adjacency of other buildings as well. Your sign code is extremely wordy and complicated. There are fifty-four sign types defined and several don't have visualizations even explaining the intent of the fifty-four sign types. And so we think that this can be dramatically reduced. That's, it's probably one of the most complicated signs ordinances we've seen. Each sign type varies by zoning district. So not only do you have to go read the signs, you gotta, they vary by your zoning district. Not only do they vary by your zoning district, they, you have to calculate the cumulative building size to calculate your signage. And not only that, you have to run the speed limit in, in order to accomplish that, the speed of the road versus, so you have all of these different things. It is a, it's an algebra equation to figure out how to build a sign here, really and truly. I would highly recommend you go read your sign section. It's hilarious. Or not. I mean, I don't know. If you're trying to build a sign, you'd be frustrated, but reading it from a peripheral, it's a, it's a really interesting read. So it's one of the most complicated codes in the region. And so going from Euclidean zoning to place types, and Euclidean zoning is what we call conventional zoning. It's where you have single-family, multifamily, commercial and it's a stackable zoning. And so generally under Euclidean zoning, you would allow for the lowest intensity being single-family and as you get higher in intensity, the lower uses are allowed. So that's stackable zoning or Euclidean zoning, that's generally what it would be called. To place types, so again, aligning place types, street types in the zoning districts up to create patterns rather than just zoning districts. The code standards are logical and remove arbitrary regulations, minimum lot sizes. How might like one parking space be allowed to determine lot width? So now you allow for So now you allow for nine-foot lot dimensions, 12 feet, right? So coming back to real logical standards and trying to figure out how to create flexibility and predictability within your codes, but make it logical and get the arbitrary requirements out of there so that creativity amongst the development community and the building community and business owners can come back to life and, and restart establishing the authenticity that you see in your downtown. Provide flexible standards to match the various land use conditions. So whether you're on a steep slope or a flat land, how might your standards emulate those patterns to, to create that type of environment? So allowing the geography and the, the physical natural environment to help inform some of these characteristics, we think that that would be a really useful way of aligning your code. And building the community goals, allowing that to drive the zoning and mapping of the new code. Creating a user-friendly document that makes it easy for the staff to administer the development community and as well as the community, where the community can become experts in the code as well, where it's not so complicated that they can come up here and have an intelligent and articulate conversation about your building regulations without having to be an expert. We think that that would be really useful. When we talk about housing diversity, this is a graphic done by Opticos Design, and oftentimes what we notice is that single-family houses in this configuration are often, you know, allowed by the zoning ordinance, and then you have some of these multi-units. Here, they would be allowed by zoning ordinance, and then you get the mid-rise apartments. But all of these different housing types oftentimes get coded out through regulations. So duplexes and triplexes, fourplexes, which allows for affordability, allows for more units on a lot, allows for incremental development patterns to come and infill vacant lots, but, and with some really unique designed housing choices. And so, people, we often say, you know, people are like animals and they thrive in different types of environments. Some people want to live in a rural environment in Bastrop, and that should be okay, and some people want to live in an urban environment in Bastrop, and that too should be okay. And you have a cross-section of housing types in between those two environments that would maybe be okay if we re-coded these types of houses back in. Four courts, bungalow courts, courtyard apartments. We were talking about these in the field today, a series of small detached houses that front a central green, right? Maybe we can code those types of things back in. Bungalow courts are townhomes, row houses. Maybe we can call them, instead of brownstones, limestones, right? You know, using authentic characteristics and materials which are prevalent in this region. Multiplex, and then live-work units. Well, your downtown has live-work units. It's ground floor retail or residential or office with residential overhead. It allows for shophouses and people to live and work in the same vicinity that they are wanting to reside in, which reduces your transportation infrastructure needs, reduces vehicle miles traveled, you know, increases the quality of life, and so, we believe that this should be explored as we go forward. The other important element of this is development in the right place. And so, what, how does this fit with Bastrop? This is called the transect, and it was a derivative of nature discovered by Ian McHarg in the 60s, and he started studying how nature, particularly beaches and dunes, how nature functioned from ocean to dunes to the second set of dunes and all the environments in between. And this is, DPZ, I believe, is a company that started to initiate this, and they were saying humans have it a very similar way. Natural zone, the rural zone is when you start introducing humans into the natural environment. Maybe it's one house, a farmhouse with some crops, right? And that's rural zone. Suburban zone is what we're doing right now with your 7,000-square-foot lots. Everyone has their own little cabin in the woods. That's your suburban zone. This is generally what we've got coded in all of your zoning districts. General urban zone, which is where you start seeing residential and some retail mixes starting to intertwine, you get different housing types in there, to your urban core, which this would be downtown Bastrop. One or two-story buildings, the buildings are brought straight up to the street edge. You have, so the grade, you're seeing it in plan view, and then you're seeing it in site plan view. So you're seeing, that's how it's depicted. So this is your street elevation view, and then you'll notice this line here is your plan view. So this building is this building on the lot in the plan view, and same thing here. And so, you'll notice that it takes up majority of the street front edge, the buildings come right up to the street. They have a very formal street with street trees every 30 feet. Out here, you have a much more rural environment, and there's not strategic locations of the trees. Maybe the street types have open swell, they don't have curb and gutters, slower, narrower streets, the park roads. So how might we integrate all of our infrastructure types to emulate these types of patterns? And where and how would this fit on the landscape in Bastrop? Those are the conversations we'd like to have, and we have the design rodeos and the code rodeos where we want to start having these dialogues with the citizens and with the commission, the council, and the public to see how this could start to lay out in these configurations and patterns. The other opportunities is small-scale allowances. Right now, under your code, you have to have a license agreement in order to come into the right-of-way, if you will. And so, what if you took that provision and said, "Well, you're allowed to enter into the right-of-way, and you don't have to have license agreements, and you start building outdoor parklets," right? This is, all they did is close off some on-street parking and built a park in the street, and people gather, it provides for additional usable space for restaurants or retailers, and so incremental changes don't have to be overly complex, and we can just start allowing them now incrementally. The right fit for Bastrop, the zoning code recommendations, place type and geographically sensitive standards. There is a variety of soil types in Bastrop. There's a variety of different regions that come together here, from Blackland Prairies, the East Texas piney woods, and you've got the Colorado River, you know, connecting these, all these different regions. So being geographically sensitive makes a lot of sense rather than having one size fits all standards. Development patterns in the 95 or 71 corridor wouldn't necessarily fit downtown and vice versa. Same with the sign types. You don't want the scale of the signs on 71 to be representative downtown, and likewise, you couldn't get a six-foot, square-foot sign, put it on 71, and expect, you know, them to be successful. So being extremely geographically sensitive makes a lot of sense here, and aligning the infill standards with existing patterns, so allowing infill development to emulate some of the patterns that are occurring downtown. Right now, that's not really allowed unless you're in the form-based code, but what if you allowed it outside of that area, and how might that actually work? Introduce the new and old development patterns back into the city, so starting to analyze what's going on currently versus what happened traditionally, and how do these two patterns made up in modern-day time? We've learned a lot since 186 years ago when the downtown was built. Maybe they got some stuff wrong, right? And so, how, what have we learned from those patterns? Maybe it's drainage. Maybe that's one, one big takeaway is like, "Hey, they didn't drain this, right? We know a lot more about drainage now. How can we do small regional systems to help us manage our drainage? Well, how do, where do they fit, and how do they go?" And so, those kind of conversations can come out of this. And so, also introducing the overall development pattern. So a traditional neighborhood development, that is a series of gridded network of streets. Blocks formed by streets with the internal lots being completely made up in Bastrop, there's no uniformity. In a lot of cities, you see very standard lot dimensions with alleys behind, and the organizational of the lots is directly correlated to the block dimensions. In Bastrop, that is not the case. Every other lot is, I'm sorry, every other block is made up of a different configuration of lots. Very unique, but it's super authentic, and we love it. I think that that's something that we should somehow figure out how to allow again. If you just have the block dimensions, you can incrementally adapt those areas, and you never have to change any of the street configurations because the lots can do it themselves. I said at the DNA report that if in the downtown area, you could have a block that is a farmlot, or you could build a series of small houses on it and have houses all over it. You can build Main Street development patterns on it. You could go all the way up to a full skyscraper on one of those blocks, and it still would not impact or transform the overall street network. And it could, it would still be authentic to Bastrop, and that's kind of a interesting thought. I mean, I understand the market, and they may not be here to support that, but the fact is that the overall block dimension can house that, and it could fit that. And so, that is flexible and as timeless as it gets. So we believe that that traditional neighborhood development should be integrated back in. What about clustered land development? This is where you're trying to preserve open space, provide more open space, and so you get a cluster of little houses or in retail areas that are in little pods, and instead of having them laid out in a conventional way that the subdivisions are being done right now. The other alternative is like a village-style development. I mean, you think of little neighborhoods in Italy or, or Amsterdam where you have compact mixed use, and maybe there's not a lot of single-family houses in and around that area, but, you know, ground floor retail, maybe it's six stories, right? And so, what if those types of development patterns could be appropriate and fit somewhere in Bastrop? Again, these are conversation starters, but we want you to think about these terms, and we'll be introducing more of these concepts as we go forward. The next steps, using the information gathered from the existing codes, the comprehensive master plan, community input, staff input, the downtown DNA, we're going to be able to start drafting code standards, determining the appropriate areas for preservation. Where do we want to say that food production's going to happen? Where are trail systems going to be integrated? How do we maintain or preserve floodplains or open spaces? What is the dimensions off of the floodplains that you preserve? Is it 100 feet? Is it 200 feet? Right? And so, you start thinking about how that gets integrated into an overall system structure for the future of Bastrop. What if it's about trails that you're trying to integrate throughout the community, and you need the 200 feet to manage stormwater if you need to do upgrades or improvements within those? You start preserving those areas. That's the conversation. Where do the transformations start happening, and what does that look like? Are we going to start retrofitting some of these parking lots with buildings? Is that a possibility? Is the development will there to do that? We should have a conversation. If we're not, do we want to even spend time coding it or studying it? Or do we move on and call it, you know, done for the next 50 years, and we'll go back and reevaluate at the time that that occurs? These are real conversations we should be having, and we should understand the nuances which come with this and the infrastructure requirements that come with this. So we need to identify areas of transformation and redevelopment and greenfield development. Where does the greenfield development happen? What does it look like? How does it feel? What does it function like? What's the infrastructure types that go along and match those development patterns? And then, beginning the translation of the districts, so converting your existing zoning districts into new zoning districts with new terminology. Beginning to consolidate your sign types, that's part of our requirements as well, and sign standards, so that we can get it from 54 to seven, maybe, hopefully, you know, right? So that's going to be the goal of this. Upcoming events, we have the design rodeo on November the 29th and 30th. We are going to start talking about these designs and these patterns of development and asking questions and having a dialogue. We have been through discovery, we have, we have, we have studied, we have reported, and now we're ready to listen. We need to listen to the community. We would love feedback through this process, and what we would like to do is have a series of designs that we ask the community, "What do you like? What did we get right? What did we get wrong? What do we need to modify? What are the resolutions which would create the modification?" We'll do that on November the 29th. It's an all-day event, majority of the time is open. We are starting at 8:00 AM, and we will be introducing schedules soon. We would love as much public feedback as possible. As we receive the public feedback, we will be having the designers go back, get all of the notes, and we'll update the, the next, we'll do a public pinup of all the drawings and the designs that, that night on the 29th. We'll get more input that night. We'll consolidate into themes. We'll go back the next day, start drawing again based off what we heard, and then again, we ask the community, "What do you like? What do you not like? Where did we get right? What did we get wrong? What do we need to modify?" We do the same type of exercise on the 30th. We re-pin it up, gather that public input, and we'll get that go away for a week. We come back December the 13th and 14th and go through the same exercise. Now that we have the community designs, we start coding it, writing the numerical standards which create those designs. What did we get right? What did we get wrong? What do we need to modify? Same type of exercise. The night of the 13th, we do another public open session. We'll gather those themes, start redrawing on the 14th, go back through the entire day. It's a, it's four intensive days to start really understanding how we can get the code to the place where the community would like to see it and have a real dialogue. Leaving on the 14th, we should have clear direction from the community of the path that we should be going and some of the development trends in which we should be coding, so that the code standards going away from that, we can actually come back to the community with and say, "We watched and helped you all design, we drew, and we've studied, and now here are the code standards that come back and emulate the patterns and designs that you all had requested." So with that, we, I believe that's the last slide? Yes, it is. And we'll be here for any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Wow. Are there any questions, comments from the commissioners?
Just one comment, one, Matt, thank you. I heard this on Tuesday night when you were there. I went, "We all need to hear this." This feeds in, I think, to the activity we started a year ago, trying to rewrite the subdivision, because I think a lot of points that Matt brought up, we were struggling with trying to figure out how to put it into that 150-page monster, and I think one of the things Matt said is, "Thin it real fast." But I, I think the objectives that we were trying to get, Matt's put up there for us. We want to make it more of a community base. We want to make it walkable. We want to have the transportation system that works, the bikes, the walking paths. Get it back to that community feel versus the big clunky monsters. And I think we were all trying to get there, but we were struggling because we didn't have the tools, and I think Matt just gave us the tools.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for that. Appreciate the work you have put in. You've taken, taken us a long way to get started, and it's taken us a long time to get started, and you have been able to bring it all together and make it make sense. Appreciate you.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all.
Likewise, ma'am. I just want to thank you also for the hard work, because at first, it kind of didn't make sense. And you and I had had some conversations at some of the events at the convention center. So I do want to thank you for your hard work. The only question that I, I have is a lot of people, I, I think Bastrop, the city, is saturated. So a lot of what you're presenting would go into the new development, which is out, outside the, in the ETJ and those areas. So I think the people that I've talked to in the community are a little confused on how, because their concern is drainage. They are, we, we live in town. We, we, there's no houses that's going to be built next to me. So none of this applies to them because they're already here, these structures are already built, their homes are already there. So to get interest in it, I think I am having a hard time convincing them to come to some of these events because they don't have a clear understanding of how this is going to help them, and they're already established homes with their drainage issues and their flooding issues. So I, I think this is all great for the new development, but I would like, I would like to see more community input. I would like to help them understand that, yes, you already have your established homes, but this is what the future's going to look like, while at the same time, helping them understand how this is going to help them and their community now.
Yes, ma'am. And one thing I would like to point out is there is much more infill availability of lots in this area. We're, we're actually doing an analysis where we're going to map all the existing streets, your existing buildings, and then remove all of that to show you the amount of infill land area that you have, and that will directly impact them. The other element is any upstream development done inappropriate could negatively impact them with regards to drainage, traffic, and so, there are so many elements as this community builds out that could worsen. If you notice Austin's traffic problems, that didn't happen overnight. That was incrementally not dealing with their development. And, you know, being one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation, they failed to manage their transportation networks and their land use patterns in order to create the allowances for people to live, work, and play within close proximities, or to allow for services to be provided in and around these neighborhoods, and it has created a real mess. They're not unique in that manner. Many of the cities throughout the United States are dealing with this. How might Bastrop be proactive to mitigate those issues before they occur? And you look at the land area of your extraterritorial jurisdiction that's surrounding you, traffic can become a major concern. Small area flooding or throughout the downtown from upstream flows, sediment discharge from, you know, from developments going on. There, there are many impacts that could negatively affect the downtown area by upstream developments, and I, we would, we would urge them to understand that, and we would, we would love to actually get into that at these events as well. So please encourage them to, to show up based on those.
And Cheryl, I applaud you for your involvement with your neighborhoods and your trying to make those folks understand. It's, they're not going to understand if they don't come in to the events and ask the questions and get the explanations, because with the moratorium, if anyone wants to build now, the first thing they have to do is show the impact it would have on drainage and on flooding. And I think that would go a long way to help people understand that the city is looking out for them, and this all fits in with what the city's trying to do. And there are, you ride around and you look, and even small, one or two homes, if they're not built correctly, if the drainage isn't right, it could impact people across the street, down the street, around the corner. So the city is looking at trying to make sure that that does not happen. And I encourage you to keep talking to those folks and try to get them to come and it'll help, make them feel a lot better.
One more item on that, Cheryl, just, when new developments go into the new code, they're going to have a developer that kind of deals with all this. Then people are going to buy houses that are already, you know, legal if we like that word, but good to go. People that live in the downtown are going to have to deal with all these requirements as an individual. And so it's actually going to affect people in the downtown a whole lot more because this area's already been developed and plotted. So if they want to go and change their lot configuration, they want to move their house, they're going to have to deal with this on their own or they're going to have to hire someone to do it for them. Whereas the new developments has, you know, they've got paid architects and everybody else that are going to deal with most of these regulations. So the downtown I see is probably the area that's going to be affected most by this as redevelopment of the downtown goes forward. Because it's all going to be done on a small scale because the big developers, you know, don't necessarily want to come and deal in onesies and twosies. They want to deal in larger pieces. And so anyway, again, like Debbie said, I would have you encourage the people that live in the downtown to show up because if they don't believe this affects them, they're going to, they're going to find out eventually that it does.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks.
Don't run away yet, Matt. You actually threw an item up that kind of got me thinking. You talked about traffic and we've all seen what's happened to Austin. I know we do traffic impact analysis on divisions, we look at everything around here. I think we need to expand it and not just look at that individual place, but look at it as a region. When we go to put a development in here, where we do an area or put shopping or something in, what's going to be the impact not just in that intersection and one street over, but across the entire area on 95 and 71? 71's going to be a commute alley between here and Austin. Are we looking at those and getting in front of that so that we don't end up looking like Austin when it comes to traffic?
Yes, sir. Those are extremely important elements. What we'll have at the design rodeo is we're going to have the overall maps plotted out and we'll be drawing all of these characteristics. That is, that is an opportunity to, so in some of the communities I've worked in, what they did is they made it to where any land use change had to be submitted altogether so they could evaluate those impacts as a collective and evaluate the system impacts rather than the individual project impacts. And so there's a variety of tools that you can put into place that would help that mitigate those potential conflicts. Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We move on to item four, 4A, our individual requests from planning and zoning commissioners. That particular items be listed on future agendas. Does anyone have anything in particular you'd like to see at the next meeting?
Me. I'd like us to look at possibly getting a monthly, adding to the update section, a monthly update from staff on the stuff that we send to council. So we always send stuff up, but it's always, if you're at the meeting or it's at the grapevine or something like that, we never do it during our meeting. It'd be nice to come back and say, hey, you guys sent this, this was approved as is. Hey, you sent this, it was denied. Hey, you sent this and they approved it, but they changed this so that we can get a better idea of what the council's thinking or how they're working. It'd be nice to have, send it back up and have it come back down.
Definitely, we can do that.
And we throw it in the update section, but if we want to talk about making that or if we can, I know we can't discuss it now, but it'd be nice to add that going forward.
Yeah, we can do that.
So the other thing was is, I know we talked about this like three months ago and I think I got one and then it kind of stopped. We've stopped getting the monthly updates on like the numbers for everything, the permits and activity updates and stuff like that.
We'll focus on that some more too.
So that's all I got.
Thank you.
One other item, Matt mentioned that he's given staff the DNA report. Could you share that with us?
Yes, it's actually available on the Building Bastrop website. So if you go there, I believe this presentation is also up there as well. So if you go to the city, main city webpage, you can link, or definitely on the planning page, you can link straight to it, but it's cityabastrop.org/buildingbastro.
Anything else? We'll move on to item five.
Looks new to you, Ron.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.